That was frustrating and stressful because I understood the math. That makes my vote and their position less likely to be elected. I don't know one candidate who says, well, if I'm not your number one choice, pick me for number two. A candidate runs to win number one. And so I think this is a confusing process. And I think it leads to mistakes and spoiled ballots, which I know happened here in Bloomington. I think ranked choice voting is an unfair process. When each person gets one vote, our voice is heard. But when a ballot is counted over and over and over again, we had a few races where they were counted three times. Their ballot is more weighted because they've gotten their vote counted three times. That's not fair. Never before has a city candidate been required to get 51% to be declared a winner. Why this undue burden on city races? We don't require that for county commissioners. We don't require that for state offices, and we don't require that for federal offices. This is an undue burden on city candidates. I also know that city positions are not supposed to be partisan positions. This last election cycle, we saw a lot of partisan things happen. And ranked choice voting results showed that. Ranked choice voting, in my opinion, is an unfair process. Ranked choice voting is expensive and a lot of work. Gas and groceries are higher than they've been in 40 years. Ranked choice voting is a surplus. I'm sorry, I just messed it up because I'm nervous. Supliferous expense. Our tax dollars are hard earned and need to be spent carefully. I respect Christina. I was an election judge. She did an amazing job. She did a great job counting all those ballots. It's not her. It's the process of making them count over and over again. We didn't have winners announced immediately because we had to count them over and over again. That's just a bunch of monkey business. The cost in dollars to the Bloomington residents through salaries and equipment is unnecessary because we're running these ballots over and over again. We're relying on computer systems, and we all know we love our computers when they work. And then for some reason, we got to reboot them because they're not working, and we got to click them in. It's frustrating. It's expensive, and it's unnecessary.
And if I could just throw in here, Linda, the expense with the old way of doing it with the primary, I think was a greater expense than the ranked choice voting expense. I agree, there was an expense to it because it was the first time, and there was a lot of education and so on.
Right, we're still having the primaries.
Not for the office.
Not for the office.
State primary is a different thing.
And about $75,000 to $100,000.
So, did you want us to?
No, I'm not, and I just have a few more comments.
Well, I understand. I just, we wanted to make sure we had time for us to provide you with information, if that's something you were interested in, because there's a couple of things that you mentioned that I would like to maybe address with you so we could get a better understanding. But I don't want to interrupt you to do that.
I would like to finish, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's unnecessarily complicated. Voting should be easy. I think it added another layer of complication and stress to the taxpayers. We're all so busy. We are looking to come out of this pandemic and find something normal. And I don't think it's a necessary thing that we have strapped on this paradigm to our elections. Fair Vote was allowed to come in to our city in 2020 during a pandemic. We had lockdowns in our schools. We had lockdowns in the parks and even in this building. And yet, we invited in a special interest group and allowed them to run this. It felt sneaky, and it felt unfair. At a time when everything that was normal was turned upside down, this very crucial decision was thrust upon the voters. No real time to think and discuss with other people. We were all locked away. It passed by a mere 96 votes. And tonight, the council is going to hear about from Bloomington residents in the form of a ballot question for the petition to repeal ranked choice voting. I did a little research into Fair Vote.
And Linda, we're getting close to your time.
Okay, one paragraph. That's it. Their 2020 accounting, they spent more than $94,000 of their own money to get this passed in Bloomington. There were a mere 13 Bloomington residents listed as donors in that. Tonight, the petition is signed by 3,321 certified Bloomington registered voters, all interested in getting and working towards repealing ranked choice voting. We are people, neighbors, talking to neighbors. Because we've had an election cycle and because we've all seen how it works, we are not happy with it. And so we have brought that before the city. And I respectfully ask you to consider this petition. It was brought with all parameters of the law to be heard before the council tonight.
Very good. All right, very quickly here, because we're at time here, so just very quickly.
Yeah, so I thought that the listening session was intended for things that weren't on tonight's agenda. So I'll throw that out there as a thing. 51% is not a threshold for ranked choice voting. It's 50% plus one vote. So I just wanted to correct the record there. Because I think it's important to, that's a very big difference. And in particular, as an example of that, ranked choice voting was passed by more than 1,000 people on the ballot, meeting the 51% threshold by state constitutional law by 96 votes. So in fact, the difference between 50% plus one and 51% is evident in that number itself. So I'm not disputing my comments. We absolutely are considering the petition tonight, exactly as you mentioned it. We know that the information is there. But I want to make sure that you have the facts as well. And I'm very happy to sit down and talk to you about that. I actually ran my campaign during ranked choice voting. I think I'm the first one to run as a first-time candidate doing that. So I would love to share my experience with you. If you want to know what I had to say in front of voters who asked me if I would, you know, if I'm not their first choice, what I would say and everything, I'd be very happy to sit down and talk with you about that.
I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm Mona DeLaSandra. I'm a recent.
Two seconds, please.
If I could, because I would like to clarify something. You said that the city invited Fair Vote Minnesota to run this? Can you clarify, what did we?
You allowed them into the city. You allowed them in during a pandemic.
So, sorry, I hate to, so Fair Vote Minnesota is a statewide advocacy organization? I mean, we didn't, I don't, would your, I'm not, that's the part I'm confused by is, they, I mean, they act, they work statewide. They are free to come and go and speak to Bloomington residents and mount a campaign and do all of that, just as anybody else is, just as statewide candidates and all kinds of other organizations have done and continue to do. We didn't invite them in specifically.
And with that, we're going to move on. Thank you. So, all right, but thank you. Thanks for.
Thank you.
Sally, good evening.
As you're calling, your next person, I would like to at some point talk about your thing. It's agenda and also my next agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. Hello.
Good evening.
Last week, the second question I asked was originally asked on May 9th. And it was yes or no to the question. Did the applicants and staff report request for council action for 8201 Park Avenue, dated March 24, 2011, state hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? And you, did you get a chance to read the staff report?
No, actually, I did not go back and look at it because you have the information already, Sally. You know the answer.
Can you assign a staff member to look at it and give council the answer to that? So the council has the answer. They don't have me giving you the answer. Because the answer is that, no, the hours were, the hours of operation were listed as 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And for me to tell you that, you know, you rely on staff. So could you get some staff member, you know, to answer that for us? So council doesn't rely on my answer?
And as we had the question last week, I mean, is this staff report versus conditions, part of the conditions in the condition of use permit?
So there was the development review committee, and then the staff report is constructed, and then there's the hearing. And through all of that, there was never a mention of a use after 10:00 p.m. So I'm asking the city to confirm that so that council here knows what had happened back then, that the hours indicated what council was voting on, what everyone was hearing, what residents were hearing was a proposed use from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So I'm telling you, that's it. But again, it has to come from staff. I mean, we could keep going on in that, you know, people could think differently.
As Jamie said, I believe I've seen that report, and you've seen the report. I think we all have. I mean, I'm seeing a couple of nods here that we have seen that report. So that does exist, Sally.
Okay, so.
That's been given. The question's been asked, the question's been answered.
I don't think the question was answered. I know the staff report was provided as an answer. But so right now, you could say, yes, the proposed use was 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I will say, in the report, they talked about 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
That wasn't part of the conditions. That wasn't part of officially what that council voted on to hold them to that. It was part of a report, this is what we're going to do. And as council member Nelson noted last week, businesses sometimes change their hours of operation. It happens sometimes.
Right, and then there's a site development agreement that everyone signs that says if there are changes, you come back to staff and you discuss that. And so to clarify, you know, for council to understand that a group came in, again, there's a development review committee. The police asked about the hours of operation, and everything was, it was ending at 10. So there was no discussion about what happens if it's later. So council was listening to people talk about a 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. use. They weren't listening to anyone mentioning anything after 10, and very specific about it ending at 10. And so, you know, bringing up, yes, there were no conditions in place because nobody on the council thought to say, oh, are you using it after 10? It wasn't a question brought up. Nobody brought up, you know, nobody. There was no reference to it being used past 10. And that's my question that I need. You've already said the board stated it was 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
And as we continue to have this discussion, and we will continue to ask this question, yes, to what end here, Sally? What are we getting at? Instead of tap dancing around all of this, questions asked, questions answered, what are you hoping to, what are we hoping to get to here? And where are, where are we going with all this? And because we keep going round and round on this. We ask the question, we give you an answer. Don't like the answer, you ask the question again. So I mean, how does it work?
Understanding of how it works, like for me to ask was the staff report 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then you say yes, and then you add to it, but there were no conditions in place. You're right, there were no conditions in place.
If I may, Mayor. Sally, one of the things I think, and obviously I wasn't there at the time, so I want to be just, as a new council member here, I will tell you that knowing that we have a mosque in our, in that district, and knowing that mosque celebrates Ramadan as part of its Muslim celebrations, I would know that there are times in the year where there are things happening at that property that go beyond 10 o'clock, especially in the summertime, or first thing in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, or whatever, sometimes in the summertime. And I, that's just because I know enough about, and again, not suggesting anybody doesn't, but because I know enough about the Islamic faith to know that that's part of what they do every year. Now, again, we don't, we don't require that religious institutions give us their schedule of religious events. That's, you know, that's protected under First Amendment privilege, right? So I don't know, is that, is that what the concern is, that they do that stuff after those times? Or?
So this is the part of the conversation, why I'm going through it step by step, that needs to be said, is because council is, does not know the details of everybody and how they're planning to use their property. And so they're supposed to be very accurate when they come in. And yes, there's going to be some, you know, something someone would have missed and council not asking a question. But for instance, specifically with Ramadan, they said 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Specifically said 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I think it was, I can't remember the wording, up to 200. So they, they were very specific. So council members, you know, like, why would they go, well, is it going to be after 10:00 p.m.? I mean, it's, they were very, they were very.
They would also say that 10 years ago, the timing of the nighttime stuff would be different because of the circulation.
No.
And at the beginning of a mosque's opening or whatever versus 10 years later, I mean.
See, that's, that's, so, no, I'm going to finish that because the use, right away, it's not, sure, the sun up, sun down, that changes, but they still use it through the night regardless. And so when somebody writes 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., specifically, they don't mention it's going to be used through the night. And again, they said up to 200. So, you know, again, you've got a council, and you're going, okay, all right, you know. There were some other interesting things too during.
Just hold on, everybody. We're six and a half minutes already again.
It's fine.
All right, so.
And I think the frustration that some of us are experiencing here is that, and I've asked you this directly, when I ask you, what action are you looking for this council to take? You have not, you have not given any answer.
Right.
Never said you want the council to take an action. And when you say you want the council to be informed when making decisions, okay, fine. But the council that you're referencing took action 12 years, 11 years ago. The only one who was on the council, that's currently on the council, was the mayor.
Right, the very last.
Yeah.
I came at the very last.
City attorney wasn't here.
Right.
So let me finish, Sally. Please let me finish. My point is that if that's why it feels to us like this isn't going anywhere, it's because we don't know how to accurately respond. We don't know how to adequately respond to what you're bringing for. And that's all I have to say.
And I really don't know what the action is for the city to take. But you guys, many of you were on the council when you approved increases in the use.
Thank you, Sally.
All right.
Mr. Code.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Quick clarification to that last comment. I believe we approved uses that were during the day.
That's correct.
We did.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Paul Code. I'm 14 year now, 14-year resident of Bloomington. It goes by fast. I am, to correct the record, I am just Kathleen's husband.
I don't know if you got agreement on that.
You missed the joke, and I'll tell you later. So before I quickly share my prepared remarks to you, I do want to just acknowledge that some of what I'm going to say may be triggering and difficult, and there's a level of emotional labor that may be involved in hearing what I'm saying. And so I just want to acknowledge that to everyone in the room, not knowing everyone's background and personal feelings and experience. So you will continue to hear from people opposed to Bloomington Pride, that they are concerned about the safety of children. And any decent person will think that's the best reason to engage in any kind of advocacy, the protection of children. But what they say they are worried about is that kids are being quote groomed or quote recruited into the LGBTQ ranks or quote exposed to explicit sexual activity, perversion, and profanity at the Pride event. Now, when my family attended Pride last year, my wife and my two children, we attended a very safe and family-friendly community gathering. And the only perversion and profanity that I observed was from a street preacher among the protesters across 98th Street, shouting vile obscenities through a bullhorn. Baseless accusations of grooming, explicit sexual activity, pedophilia, sexual abuse of children, these are very old, very often-used, harmful tropes and stereotypes, a demonizing, toxic, false narrative to groom impressionable people into fearing and hating the LGBTQ community. And my wife and I have taken our kids to Pride events for years and for very personal reasons. We have family members in the community that Pride celebrates. My sibling, my godmother, we have friends and neighbors in the community. I'm a high school arts teacher, and I have trans kids and gay kids in my classroom and in my care. So we see the trauma that they endure from demonization and bullying. And I'm going to tell you something about my history. I once thought like the protesters did. When I was young, when I was a kid, I was raised, or I could say groomed, to fear gay people. My parents pushed the same harmful tropes on me that we hear from these protesters. But when my godmother came out as a lesbian in 1990, or a family friend came out as transgender, or my sibling came out, I watched how horribly my parents treated them and saw and felt how abusive and traumatic that treatment was. And I saw the destructive power of hate. So I chose to change, and I chose to love. Pride exists precisely because there are bullies out there who don't want people to celebrate, who are celebrated by Pride, to exist. The protesters across 98th Street aren't out there because Bloomington hosted a Pride event. You're hosting a Pride event because it is well-known that there are people out there who hate our loved ones because of who they are and who they love. Inherently, the bigots expose themselves. One of those out-of-town street preachers I mentioned is a guy named Rich Pankowski, a pastor of some out-of-town church called Warriors for Christ, who was publicly invited last Friday on a thread on the official City of Bloomington Facebook page by a protest organizer to come to town to do his bullhorn routine again this year, which he likewise publicly accepted on that thread. His very public header on his personal Facebook page states a quote, and this is going to be disturbing perhaps, "Sodomites are worthy of death," is the quote on his page. More than that, on that very public thread I mentioned, you will find that Mr. Pankowski also stated that he believes parents who take their kids to Pride should likewise be executed. If these protesters really cared about the safety of others, they wouldn't openly and publicly invite people who they know want other human beings dead. No, these people want to control others, and they are willing to go to great lengths to assert that control, and those lengths can indeed kill. According to the Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Youth Mental Health, 45% of youth who identify as LGBTQ consider suicide. As a teacher of these kids in my classroom, I know going in that half of my gay or trans students have thought about killing themselves. And why? Well, if you walk around a very harsh world as a young person, and you hear so many people in the home and in the community and in the school call your very existence a sinful abomination, worthy of death, you might start to believe it. And they want these kids to believe it. Of course they do. That's why they say it. The protesters across 98th Street are not just trying to groom others into fearing a certain community, but to groom that community itself, to bully them and degrade them, to tempt them into questioning their existence. And existence, those protesters openly and publicly state they don't want LGBTQ people to have. So Pride exists to make sure that those people, including youth, know that they are loved and supported, no matter who they are, no matter who they love, and to invite everyone to love and celebrate and stand up for their neighbors. Pride saves lives that that preacher thinks are worthy of death. And by hosting Pride, you are saving lives. That preacher shouted hate speech into a bullhorn, thinks he's there because Bloomington puts on a Pride event. You and I know that you are hosting this event precisely because the people across the street who openly state on the city's own social media page on Friday that they want us dead are out there peddling that harm. And you are right and courageous to counter that harm with your good work. And so I want to thank you for your courage, and I want to thank you for your good work. And I'm going to ask you to please never back down from these bullies because lives depend on you. I would also ask the city, do its part to publicize the new suicide prevention hotline, the federal line. People in distress can now call the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline by dialing 988. And I really hope that the people who fall for the, into believing these harmful stereotypes do what I did when I was young and choose to change their horrible attitude about this beautiful segment of our diverse society. And I thank you very much for your time.
And I will say that we will go forward with Pride this year. And I will also say that understanding that sometimes words translate into actions in a bad way. I know that Chief Hodges is well aware of these threats, and there is a plan in place. Just to let you know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hassan. Good evening.
My name is Hassan Gulet. I've been resident of Bloomington for last seven years. I'm not sure, the article item I have is about the citywide organic recycling program.
Okay.
That's what that is. So what I feel personally as a resident is that I'm paying surface that I'm not using. The number one. Number two, I think it's unfair also that I'm paying something that I'm not using. I'm going to be very quick, I'll tell you. But the thing is, I'm against it. I feel unfair. It's not because I don't, I cannot pay afford to pay the few dollars. It's not, that's the case. But I think it's not, it's unfair to just generalize and pass it. So one thing is that I don't think it's effective. I think if the goal was created to, so that the program will have a positive impact in the, on the environment, it's not doing that. The reason it's not doing that is because, I would say, 90% of the residents are not either aware or are not using. And I will tell you why. I look at around last year, our garbage collected on only, on Tuesdays. Every Tuesday for garbage, every other, you know, for the recycle. I went around in my neighborhood, the streets, 84 properties I observed. I think I observed only one house that had the organic recycle. Now, so, because, and one thing I asked you, they said they are not aware. Or they said even they don't know that, that, you know, the increase was added to their utility bills. That's one thing. And they don't have the card. That's one thing. The other thing, it's not, it's not effective, I think, is because the city made it optional. But paying is a must. So I think it's unfair. So yard waste is optional, but organic recycle. The other thing I would look at, what I use in my house, what is the percentage that I look at and can go into organic recycle? It's little tiny like that, or even doesn't exist, the items I have. So the other thing, what I see is that the cards, the, okay, who is this is going to help? Is it helping for recycling solid waste companies? Or it's directly right away, quickly impacting or helping the environment? I don't see that. I would, this would have been a pilot program, maybe. So the only thing that is benefiting is right now thus far, it's garbage companies, a recycling yard waste, I mean, solid waste companies. And remember that we had voted whether we're going to keep the garbage collection program thus far by leaving in the company so that we don't have trucks hauling around in the streets. It's too many trucks. That's also contribute to the environment. But right now, we added one more company that most likely, most of the time, had even nothing to collect it because there are no carts. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I will say, just in response, I think our city participation rate is in the low 20%. I think it's 23 or 24%. So it's, it's, yeah, it's, 75% are not, but 25% are. And I know we are as well. The decision was made, this was a mandate from Hennepin County. We had to offer organics recycling to our community by the first of this past year. And so what we made the decision was to charge everyone because to not, to only charge users would have pushed the cost so high that it would have reduced the number of users. And so once we dove into this program and decided we were going to do this, we wanted to do it in a way that it would be successful. We wanted to spread the cost across the entire community to, A, keep the cost down and encourage people to participate, and then B, ultimately, see more and more participation throughout our community. And so that's, that's the goal of it. This notion of you don't use it, so it's unfair to pay for it. I don't have kids in the school district, and still I'm paying school district taxes and have been all 20 years that I've been in Bloomington. So I mean, it's a, government spending is not à la carte. You don't get to pick and choose what you choose. It's, that's not the way it works. And so that's the way it is here as well. Quickly, we're behind, we're ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe you could also clarify in our studies how much of the waste stream could be diverted into organic, because it was significant.
30%, I believe.
Yeah, it was over 30% of all the waste could be done. And a lot of people, including my family, have been able to downsize their garbage cart to offset the majority of the costs there, getting that organics. And, but I think, you know, to your point, every neighborhood is going to be different in terms of options.
What, right now, what's the city is doing so that maybe to inform, maybe, maybe residents are aware of this?
It's a very good point. Public education.
In fact, I had a conversation with the city manager earlier today about this exactly.
Two hours ago.
So, not wrong on that front. We should have a goal that says by X, by the end of this year, that number goes from 23 to something much higher, right? And we have to figure out how to get there. So you're absolutely right on that.
Mr. Mayor and council members, and sir, we did have a goal of 25% in the first year. So we're almost to our first.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So that's, that's good. And if you, sir, would be willing to sign your name and your address on the form too. Because if there's only one in 84 neighbors in your neighborhood, we really want to get the work. Thank you. Thanks to everybody who spoke today. Appreciate it. Council, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Downstairs now. Downstairs now.
Motion carries.